Good afternoon, welcome to the Wednesday E O C C. We've got a couple of things today, but we'll start with building or plus public works.
Mike Moss, Public Services Director. Thank you, Commissioners. You've got agenda in front of you. We'll start off with parks. Cougar restroom. We started cleaning that restroom last month. We now have bids and quotes in from our current janitorial service, Celix, to clean those restrooms. Right now, the Parks Department is cleaning those restrooms. We asked for a quote from Celix for five days a week during the summer months and twice a week in the winter months. And it came out to be for the rest of this year, since our contract's only with Pacific Core through the rest of this year, right at $20,000 to clean those restrooms. I passed those numbers on to Kathia O F M, looking at seeing what budget that might come out of. We talked earlier about having it maybe come out of the tourism funds. So I'm just getting approval from you guys today to move forward with an amendment with Celix rather than our Parks Crew. They're quite busy over the summer months with a lot of their efforts, rather than driving to Cougar five days a week to clean restrooms.
You mean our plethora of Parks Crew can't handle that? So how much I?
It's right at $20,000 for the rest of this calendar year to clean the restrooms through Celix.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward with that amendment. Maintenance, a quick update on the juror space. We've been doing a little bit of work over there. Tour it again this week with our staff. We got flooring in, I believe, last weekend in that location. TVs are on the wall. They're actually working now. There's sports on one end, I believe, and weather on the other side or news on the other side. Is this?
The juror space you're talking about is the outside lobby?
Correct, on the second floor of H O J.
About the different jury rooms.
No, correct. Seating for that juror space on the second floor, it looks like June or July will be when we're going to be adding those new seats and taking out those benches in that area. Looking at windows tinted in that area that's really hot. There's a lot of heat coming through those windows. For some people coming to the county, it may be their only experience at a county facility when they're on jury duty. And right now, the lobby there is kind of aged, dated, and not the best looking representation for the county. So when you're standing there looking at the river, it's actually quite a view across the river to the train station. We're going to clean the roof down below, clean the windows up, tent them, and then just make it, put some drinking fountains in. That's the last item there. We ordered four drinking fountains this morning, two for that area and two, one for the first floor and one for the back room. Right now, the drinking fountains are, do not work. So we're going to put drinking fountains in very similar to the ones here in the hallway where you can do a water bottle and the regular spigot. So we'll hopefully get those in place shortly. I know this last week they had to hand out water bottles when it got warm over there since we didn't have a water facility on, on the second floor. So.
Are you going to do the tinting on the outside of the window?
Uh, the ones we got earlier bids for was the interior tinted going out. Yeah, it's easier for install.
Yeah, I know it's easier to install, but it isn't as effective.
Effective, yeah. That's the ones that we're going down in the judge's area that we're working on now. This is going to be a different contract because they're looking at a different type of material on the outside. So we'll have to find out if it's interior or exterior. The ones we're doing now are in the interior though.
And we're, we're not talking about huge expensive.
No, no.
So I'm wondering, is this an opportunity for you to play with electrical window tinting, that is to say, collecting electricity from, from a tinted window?
Didn't know that was an option.
It is, and I, I think it is. I just, I like experimenting with little things to just. It's, it's probably terribly expensive, but you might carve out a little piece and say, let's try it here.
I'll look into that.
Sort of like a solar panel.
It's a solar panel, but it's a thin solar panel, yeah. And that takes the energy away from the heat there, but okay.
We'll look into that. That's a good idea. So hopefully get most of that items done there in the next, I'd say, eight weeks. Like I said, it's, it's been overdue for an upgrade.
The question again, the drinking fountains are going to be in that main area?
Yeah, there's two in there now on the, on the courtroom side of that area.
Sometimes they work.
One works. You have to get really close, which most people don't want to do. The other one right now is not working at all. So. Hope to, need an upgrade there for sure.
So that's two. So you're replacing those two with something that will work?
Yes.
And where are the other two?
One's down on the first floor and the other one is the back hallway, I believe, of the second floor.
Okay.
We took a, staff took a tour today and found four drinking fountains. We said, go ahead and do all four at the same time and get it over.
So the staff has no drinking fountain now except the two that don't work?
They, one in the back might have a small trickle also.
Oh, okay.
But none of them have a water bottle feature.
It's not surprising. I think they are on Longview City Water and the silica's just been murder on everybody's narrow, narrow.
Yeah, with the new ones with filters on them, we'll hopefully have a better luck with that water system.
Again on that.
With the newer ones that have a filter on them, but that's why we picked exactly the same ones we have here. So we have the same filters throughout the county.
This is Kelsa Water though.
It is, but we, it is, but we wanted to make sure we have the same models. We just stock one set of filters for all our, our drinking fountains. Good. Next item was the museum update. We are going to start off with lights. We're actually adding eight new LED high output, long life wall packs around the museum. We did a walkthrough, got some pricing on some museum fencing to help keep people away from the back door and also some hidey holes around the front entrance. But even then, it was really hard to get it completely enclosed because of the, the way that building's shaped. So we initially thought it would be quicker and fast, quicker and more at least expensive to go the route of lighting. So we're going to put on, really light that building up on all four sides to make sure maybe people stay away from there. It won't be such a easy spot to go hide out in the evening time, but still look at fencing. I needed to do a walkthrough with risk management because some of the fencing areas they had were, I don't think we're going to be ADA compliant. This is the way they're wanting to put gates and walls up on ramps. I don't think that was going to work. So I need to walk through with Shelley and Scott to see what works best for fencing. But in the meantime, we're hoping to get lighting up in the next couple of weeks at that location. We gave the okay to move forward with lights.
Motion sensitive?
They're just, they're going to turn on just on the evening time. They're going to be on a sensor, but not a motion.
Well, a motion sensor would be good because then you can make it a couple hundred thousand lumens. Well, I just know other places had, have had good luck with the motion sensors because they pop on and then they, they tend to not stay there anymore because every time they move it pops on.
Pops back on rather than having them on constant. Okay, we can try either way. Easy to change those sensors out if it's.
Might talk to Joseph. I know he went and talked to Bill Buchan, who had put up some of those and said they've had good luck with them, so.
Yeah, I left Joseph a email or a phone message earlier today, so I want to make sure he's on the same page as us.
Yeah. I agree. If we could make those work, it's better than having a big ugly fence around the place.
Yeah, the way it looked, he almost had to do fencing on three sides of that structure.
And that would make them extra bright.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, really obnoxiously bright.
That's the goal.
Yeah. Your neighbors are going to complain.
And the last one for maintenance was the O P D lease. I know we've talked about this for a while and kicked the can down the road. It's been since August of last year that that facility's been paying time and a half on their rent. So instead of 6,000 a month, I believe they're paying 9,000 a month. Coming here today from a little direction again, we still haven't, we've searched a lot of places and had a lot of space committee meetings and Commissioner Doll's been at some of those meetings. It's challenging to find a home for them for 20 offices. I know it's killing their budget. My recommendation for the short term, I know it sounds short, long term, but it's a three-year lease. Would it be sign that lease if we want to get out of that lease? The penalty is we have to pay the monthly rent till they find somebody new to take that space. But the way it's moving, it's 10 months has gone by pretty fast or nine months. I would guess three years ago by just as quick. We, we're still looking, we're still wanting to find homes for them. We met yesterday with Judge Holland at H O J to try and find space for a satellite office for Ian's group over at Hall of Justice, try and move a few people around to give him a spot there. At least two or three offices at that location. And I think we're making some headway there. But it's, it's been challenging to find a, a home for 20 offices throughout this county that in one location. So I don't know what, what, what the board would like to do moving forward.
So we've been paying 3,000 extra over the last nine months. So we've paid an extra 27.
Probably can't say anything on the nice side. If we sign a three-year lease, we won't move for three years. And that just means we, we ignored a problem for another three years.
I, I wonder if there is a, a different solution. If there are some underutilized buildings around here that we might be able to buy. If it's not particularly a business that's doing well. Just have an office building.
I, I, I like your thinking that I, I'd never like to be disadvantaged when I'm in a transaction.
We made the, asked the option, you know, buy that first floor there instead of paying rent. We actually just own the structure and the landlord at this point does not want to sell because the second floor has been for sale of that spot, but only half the second floor. One of the thoughts we've been throwing around as a staff, we know we have to courthouse square needs a lot of help. As you know, probably almost to the point where it needs to come down to something else built right by the jail. And does that get built up for O P D and, you know, having our own structure? It makes sense location wise and we have to either spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in courthouse square or just start over that same location. Make it a little bit bigger that could, you know, function for O P D and maybe drug court or whoever else would be tenants at that location. But, and we meet a lot as a group and I hate to say we just meet to meet, but I think we're making some headway on a lot of issues, but you're right, Commissioner. We signed three years. We probably won't, I don't want to say we look at this for two and a half years because that's not our mindset, but it's an easy way to look at, say, oh, push it to the back burner for now because we have three years to worry about it. We want to get out of there sooner or later because they, it's not a great location for Ian and his group. He knows that, but it's also his best option at this point. Rather than spreading out maybe four offices at annex and three offices here. That's really what they don't want to do at this point.
And last we talked a little bit on that was seemingly a lot of potential at H O J, but that wouldn't materialize for three years.
Yeah, correct. At least.
What, what do you think? You talk about, I know we've talked about courthouse square. We pay, we're paying nine grand a month, right? Now where we're sitting.
Correct, yes.
So what would be the, the, the monthly stroke on that?
Yeah, we haven't penciled out.
Pencil that. If we have, if there's temporary space, like I know we have space over here now and you have space other. You get them out of there, it may be, they'll be kind of inconvenient for a while, but then if you make a decision and we did courthouse square and it doesn't cost you any more than what we're paying for monthly lease now, that, that may.
Yeah, I'd rather make a mortgage payment than make a lease payment. I, I agree with you. Yeah, I'd rather make a mortgage payment than make a lease payment. I, I agree with you there, yeah. So we can look at that. We can kick, kick it up another month, but let me get back to staff and see if we can get leased to get some square footage and dollar amount per square footage for our Courthouse Square. And come back to you guys and say it's gonna cost us fifteen grand on a mortgage payment or nine grand on rental payment. It might be an easier decision for you guys at that point.
Are, are you thinking about LO building and, and Annex is?
I'm just, I kind of piggybacking on Dennis a little bit. If we had extra space, they're gonna be inconvenient for a while. But if we had something that we could plan, save that rental money and start putting it into.
Into something we own?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree completely there.
Maybe worth looking at.
I'm thinking we've got empty, empty space across the, across the quad and the Annex and, uh, I the LO building, how should I call that? The LO building?
Yeah.
Um. The extension building.
The extension building, thank you.
Uh, either that or the funeral home, but you know, the extension.
Extension.
Maybe look at something like that, Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted some feedback, make sure.
You know, you're pretty good about throwing numbers together, right?
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
He likes that part of his job.
You're, you're looking for at most ten thousand square feet, right? Or even half.
Yeah, I think their recom, their, their thoughts, they wanted more space than that, but I think that we could get to that point, yeah. Everybody wants more when you ask exactly how much they need.
The the LO building has almost enough space.
Yeah, it's just the, the, the top floor and the basement. Yeah, I think the, is access issues at this point.
That would still require a quarter of a million dollar elevator.
Depends on who you have at those floors, that's correct. That's, that's the issue we've had of trying to find people to go there because of the access on the first or the top and the bottom floor.
Well, you'd help the COs because, uh, once the, uh, the person went down, they wouldn't be able to get back up, right? You'd always know where they were.
How many offices do they have now, Mike?
Over here?
No.
Oh.
That they're utilizing in the.
Uh, OPD?
Yeah.
Is they, I think it's eighteen, nineteen? And then, and they're looking to have like, I think, four or five more. I think they're looking for a total of twenty-two or twenty-three when it's all.
How many offices?
Oh, that's so broken up. I mean, on the main floor, I would guess going down the hallway, twelve, ten, and then half that in the second floor, at least half the size because of the dimensions. So there's probably twenty-five in that building.
How many on the second floor if it was empty?
I'm talking about the whole, I'm just, the whole thing, maybe twenty-five total.
Oh.
Yeah.
Cool. All right.
Yeah.
Another possibility is to inquire the school district if they're done with Catlin School.
Yeah, but their plans are.
I could serve a number of needs.
Yeah.
It's in the plans to, to close it?
Well, they've been using it as the staging room for all the others, all the other buildings that have been renovated. Remember, they opened up Lexington to take the population from Catlin.
Yeah.
Because there are fewer and fewer kids from West Kelso going to, I mean, there are just not that many kids. So the growth is out in Lexington. So they gotta do something with that building. I think they're, who is there now?
Rose Valley. Rose Valley.
Rose Valley. So when they get done.
We'll ask.
Know what their plan is.
Okay, good idea. Thank you.
Or maybe District Court. Have their own little buildings.
Thank you.
I guess we have the pleasure of jumping to Public Works, Susan Eugenius, County Engineer. So I'm kind of, uh, last we talked about it, Toodle Park Road, uh, issue. I promised I would do a rough estimate of how much it would cost to relocate the road coming off of Burma. Um, I am in the ballpark of using LiDAR and this is not the best way to design stuff. Um, laying down a road template and earthwork. Um, we're looking at one and a half million dollars to, uh, build close to a half mile of road. Uh, to reroute the traffic around that location.
That would, that would serve not only the residents out there, but also the shooting range?
Yes, so the plan would be you'd come off the end of Burma and you'd cut over, overland, tie in the shooting range near the, um, parking lot and then at, use that road down to connect into the driveways of the homes. That would be, uh, no longer have access. So that would be the idea. Um, the one of, besides, uh, property cost, obviously the other big unknown is there's a ravine in between Burma and the shooting range. And we haven't talked to Fish and Wildlife on, is this a fish stream? Is it actually a stream? So I don't know what size culvert. I guessed at a four-foot diameter culvert price. Um, so that's the other unknown in my rough cost estimate. So.
By ravine, you're talking about a former Toodle River passageway or is it, or is it a creek?
I don't know. Um, it's, doesn't show up on all, any of the maps and it could have been created by the placement of the, uh, dredge spoils. I just wanted to do a real quick, uh, estimate.
You just need a good compactor with them.
And just, just the bulldozer. Just, just push it right out and just keep driving over.
County stickers on that new dozer yet, didn't you, Mike?
So I guess the.
Make sure Rick gets first dibs.
Okay, yeah. Uh, so my question, I guess, to you guys is, do you want me to start, uh, down the road of setting this up as a real project? Getting a real survey and appraising, or should we put it on hold and you guys percolate until we hear back from Darren as the potential other solution?
I I, when looking at that, and I don't know what Darren's gonna say, but I, I can't imagine you gonna be, do anything on that deal for less than a million and a half.
Yeah.
I just can't even imagine that he'd be able to do it for less than that, plus the permit times. I don't know if he could get permits in time enough before the road's gone. So I, this is kind of, like Aron says, on a deal, we sign a lease, we're not gonna think about it. Well, I, I don't think we need to percolate on this. I think we'd probably better off keep moving forward because I, it appears to me that's gonna be the cheapest option to saving that road.
And, and that was my gut instinct also.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will move ahead, set up a project number and, uh, get the, the survey going and start that work.
Ugh.
Uh, so the other item from.
Must be an RCO grant that'll help us out there.
Yeah.
There we go, RCO grant.
Well, because of the other road, it would be something I would certainly talk to our senator and our representatives about, maybe a little. Wouldn't be opposed to asking for maybe a little bit of help.
And RCO, you may not be off base too far there and you're probably serious when you said it anyway, that, you know, RCO helped pay for the guard rail and chip seal and parking lot and all that stuff. So if we have another entrance, they might assist us in the, the same, same way, especially.
Well, yeah.
It sounds like.
That would cut off interest to the park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we can submit again, almost the same paperwork, just in a different direction.
And if you just authorize the off-road track, that's a whole nother facility they'll help fund.
Never know. So good idea. Thank you.
So then, uh, Mike and I wanted to kind of give you a preview of the summer road maintenance schedule. So we've approved the rock bid. We're purchasing oil on state contract. The crews have been out there prepping the road. Uh, we have gone out there and put signs up, uh, early, uh, coming your way, uh, chip seal this summer.
Is ours the Oil Rock two thousand twenty-four signs?
Yes.
Yes.
The Oil Rock.
They have Facebook, wanted to know if it was a band coming or something.
We really don't know what's this saying. If we, we talked about chip seal and that might confuse people, so we went with Oil Rock. Actually, I saw these signs on Eastern Washington when I was over there.
So you should just label it Swift Rockin' Chick.
I love it, yeah.
Broken windshield season, no. Um, so when I was on the east side, I thought it was cool because they're telling us a year in advance on the east side. Hey, this road's gonna be chip sealed the following summer. So we're, we're getting signage out now for this summer, but also getting signage out later in the summer for summer of twenty twenty-five. So people know the main roads will be done in twenty twenty-five. They can do a bit of pre-planning that way in case they're doing something major at their house or reception or whatever, so.
We doubled the size of the project this year, right?
Chip seal, yes.
Yeah, so that was, is that because we cut back last year or it's just, okay?
And also overlay, we add a lot to our overlay projects this summer.
Saw one, as you come out of Cass Rock on Huntington, uh, the, the road that goes up the hill, kind of behind, beside that little gazebo thing? Right next to the actual rock?
Oh, uh, Burma, not Burma Blouse, uh.
I forget the name, but.
First of B, Beulyn, Beulyn.
Beulyn Drive?
Yeah, it has a sign. Is that a county road?
Part of Beulyn is.
Yeah.
Is part of it?
Part of, part of it, yeah, that's right. It's weird. They're in city limits.
So, and in addition to that, we're trying to get an early start this year. Um, we're starting in Longview.
Yes, Longview.
In Longview, they have their, their prep work. They are almost completed with their prep work and our goal is to be starting about the tenth of June. Uh, starting our rock, um, because people have more success. If they start early, it seals up and is, wears better through the winter. So our goal is start early this year. Um, we'll, we'll see how that goes.
So the city got finished with that collaborative project that was some of the county, some county road and some city road in West Longview, right?
Forty-second.
Forty-sixth?
Something like that.
I believe so.
Yeah. One of those weird things that we actually collaborated, they took care of it. I'm sure they're charging us, but it all comes from a grant, I suppose.
It was predominantly grant funded and then, uh, there was quite a bit of utility work out there. So water and sewer and, uh, grant funding.
The only reason I brought it up is that they've been greatly inconvenienced the last year and a half, but while this major redo.
Yes.
So if we do it just beyond, it's gonna be like, it never ends.
Yes.
So I'm also often curious when, when things change. Uh, like you say, you're, you're gonna start chip sealing earlier?
Yes.
We've been chip sealing forever, right?
Yes.
Why did we not start earlier?
Um, the, it, it all depends on how, the winter, um, and when our Oil Rock bid goes out. And by the winter, I mean, excuse me, two years ago, we had snow on April tenth and we lost lots and lots of trees. So the cleanup from that absorbed all of their April. So the crews generally start prepping the roads.
New strategy, just responding to the environment.
Yes, and we, we really want to start it earlier, but most years we get pushed back till after the fourth. So this year, we, we, we have loudly said multiple times, we are starting in June to try and hold our feet to the fire.
There was some change in process.
It's mainly the road prep side of it. And most years we shoot for mid-June, but it happens fourth of July, so we really want to get it there earlier this year. Plus it gives our crews, if we get done in six weeks, our goal is to, then that gives us a cruise, a month of August off to have vacation time with our family rather than stretching it out. When the kids are out of school, they're doing chip seal. Chip seal usually requires the entire crews from all four shops to work together on these. So there's not a lot of vacation time during that period.
Okay. We're all good.
Thank you.
Wait, uh, yeah. Are you involved at all in the flyover and the Kelso over?
The overpass, the railroad overpass.
Oh.
Hazel Street.
Hazel.
The Hazel Street overpass? Um, I guess that depends on what you mean by involved.
Kelso's taking care of it.
It's Kelso's project. Um, and it's.
It's got to interface with you somewhere.
Yes, so if you remember however many years ago that was, we signed that, uh, agreement.
It just seems like yesterday.
It just seems like yesterday. So I actually had a meeting with Kelso week ago, two weeks ago, to discuss the project.
See how timely my question is.
So we talked about the project and the agreement was that once all the properties was acquired, we would enter into a, another agreement of property transfer and annexation of all of those roadways. So we are working on that process right now. My hope is by the time that they have started the project or prior to starting the project, the only interface that the county road will have with that is where the county road ends and all of their work starts.
Right.
That is the goal, so that my staff's only role is to make sure that their warning signs into the construction is right. And when they make that final cut and they tap, put that tack code in, they feather the two pavement surfaces in nicely.
Good, and the annexing is to annex into Kelso, what used to be part of a donut hole or the whole donut hole?
It will only be the part that is there, yes. Uh, it will not be the rest of Hazel Street. So we'll still have that hole from where the project ends to almost thirteenth. It will still be a county donut hole.
So, eh, eh, to curiosity, you maintain the streets there?
Yes.
Uh, does that cause you any problem interfacing with the other streets? Are your standards different? Do you schedule different?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fortunately, I think there's only one or two connections. I mean, it's kind of like one long dead end, not really a dead end, but.
So we have Hazel and then we have the next road up, which I believe is Willow, then there's Walnut. And I think there, no use in the city, but there's at Laurel, that's the other one, I think. Uh, there's just multiple roads that either tie into South Pacific or tie into thirteenth that in the middle are county roads. And then there are a few over on the opposite side of the railroad tracks that are also in the county that are just the tail ends of the roadways.
So I suppose I have to be careful here what I say, but throwing caution to wind, I'm pretty, eh, eh, I have a lot of pride in how we maintain the county streets, roads, and, uh, I know there's a lot of trouble in South Kelso streets. And I don't want us to be a part of that trouble.
Neither do I. Uh, that is, uh, we try and keep our streets in good condition down there. Uh, South Pacific, the entirety, none of that is a county, uh, road. Um, but a good section of Hazel is and some of those other streets to the north.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I, when you attend their meetings, I won't say every meeting, but majority of meetings, some neighborhood comes in and talks about roads. I know they got a backlog there, whatever they're trying to work through, so I hear what you're saying.
So it's one of those struggles that cities have in Calis County. Because the major taxpayers are just outside city limits, at the mills. And they provide ample revenue for the county. So one of the reasons our counties have been, were able to do such, such a good job with our roads. But Kelso, I mean, what factory is in Kelso? There's not much and, and so consequently, it's, it's all resting on homeowners. And I mean, that's, you know, there's a limit to how much people can pay, especially when you're talking about neighborhoods that are already classified as low income or, you know, CBDG aimed. Although CDBG neighborhoods qualify for help from the federal government for, for infrastructure improvements, but there's never enough.
I appreciate that explanation. I, I would say that as a big factor. I think another big factor is inclination. You always have a choice. Do I spend the money here or do I spend the money there? So, uh, because we have a public works is very much dedicated and large organization, they choose to spend it in the right place.
And, and the, one of the other significant differences between county government and the cities is that cities make a choice to have really good parks. You know, there's finite amount of money and our parks are much limited. We've, thankfully, we've got Pacific Corps that provides us with a huge parks and recreation, uh, set of opportunities. And, uh, so consequently, we focus on roads, cities, libraries and parks.
Yeah, it's an interesting discussion. I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you both. We, uh, uh, yesterday we approved a proclamation for National Police Week and I thought I'd read this and then, uh, we'll give the chaplaincy and the sheriff a little, little time today. So you have to put up with my, my reading here. To recognize National Police Week two thousand twenty-four and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Calis County Sheriff's Department. And whereas the Calis County Sheriff's Department plays an essential role in safeguarding. And whereas the Calhoun County Sheriff's Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all members of the community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and liberty, life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen, fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer, Officers Memorial this spring. In 2023, the names of 556 officers were added to the wall. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families and US flags should be flown at half staff. And therefore be it resolved that the following designates May 11th through the 17th as Police Week in and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And it is signed by, uh, B O C C. Well. Let me have him sign it and get it out to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl for reading that proclamation. I have been, uh, at the National Police and Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC. And I have, um, pencil etchings of the names of the Calhoun County officers that are there in that memorial. I want to just mention a few things today. The first law enforcement officer to lose his life in the line of duty was a Kelso police officer by the name of Francis Cohen on March 27th, 1948. He was shot and killed in the line of duty, leaving behind a young family. The next person I want to mention is Chief Randy Gibson, who we lost in January of 2017. Randy was a very dedicated officer. Even though he was struggling with cancer, he went to work every day. The day in which he died, he was involved in a high-speed arrest off of I-5. I visited with Randy in the hospital and he was ready to get out of the hospital and go back to work. He was very dedicated to his job, to the police officers that he worked with and also to the citizens of the city of Kalama. Randy also was a real visionary. You probably remember the big flood that Kalama had that took out the police station, the fire station and all of downtown. And one day I was in Randy's office and he said, hey, Chaplain, I got an idea of where the next police department should be. And it's where it's sitting right now. Uh, Randy said, you know, it'll put us out of the flood plain and it'll give us very quick access to the west side of I-5. And with all the development that's taken place over there, that was a real visionary thing on his part. Tonight being the national day, May 15th, there's going to be a candlelight vigil and you're all invited, uh, to the park along the river at seven o'clock in Kalama. And of course, we want to mention Deputy Justin DeRozier, um, April 14, 2019. Justin was shot and killed. We just went through the fifth remembrance of Justin's death. Justin was a great deputy, even though he was kind of a physically imposing, uh, person, uh, he was also a very gentle person. Uh, I was on many crisis scenes with Justin. In fact, when 911 would call me out on a scene and if it was a county, uh, address, I would think to myself, oh, Justin must be working today because it always seemed like it was Justin and I together on those scenes. And so I think it was very appropriate that SR 411 is now the Justin DeRozier Memorial Highway. Every day, law enforcement officers put themselves in harm's way. And they don't know whether they'll go home, uh, after their shift. I think of the four officers in Charlotte, North Carolina that lost their life in one day and several others that were wounded. I think of all the officers that are on college campuses right now, uh, putting themselves in harm's way and at the same time, working very hard not to harm the students that are out there. So I think we should all be very thankful, uh, for the Calhoun County Sheriff's Office. Uh, Sheriff Thurman has done a tremendous job. You know, he had only been the sheriff for a couple of months when Justin, uh, died. And through his leadership and the leadership of the other chiefs, the sheriff's office is doing well. And they're tremendous deputies and, uh, they're very, uh, professional men or very, uh, solid men, quality men uh, and women, uh, but also very dedicated to their service. So I want to encourage you to keep supporting them, support Sheriff Thurman, support them with the funds that they need to do their work. And I promise you on behalf of the chaplains that we will support them with our prayers and we will support them. Uh, when they need us, we'll respond in a moment's notice. Thank you for the opportunity to share today.
Absolutely. Thank you. Sheriff, you got it? Any words?
I don't have anything prepared, but that's, it never, it never stopped me before. So, you know, I, I just, I want to thank, uh, the commissioners for the support of our local law enforcement, uh, the support of the chaplaincy. Uh, certainly they shone through with the Justin DeRozier, uh, incident, which we hope doesn't happen again, but, uh, they're there for us day to day. In and out, uh, visiting with us, being there in crisis, uh, one of the big things they've done here in the last couple of years have, uh, worked with us to establish a peer support program for our deputies. And it's a resource for them, whether it's personal or professional problems they're dealing with. Uh, the chaplains are there for us and, uh, also want to mention the support of our community. They're very supportive of us. We go out in public. They're thanking us for our service and that's very, uh, reassuring to us to know that we have the support of our community and compared to what you hear about nationwide and even in our own region, the Seattle's, the Portland's, things that are going on there and, uh, the attacks on law enforcement. We have a very supportive community and it's a great place to live and work for everyone. But it's a good place to be a law enforcement officer and a lot of that has to do with the, uh, everyone I've mentioned, the commissioners, the community and the chaplaincy. So thank you for this resolution and we'll, uh, proudly display it in our office. Thank you.
Let me come around and see if you guys can.
No. Wasn't sure. One, two, three. One more. Steve, would you mind taking one with my camera if I jump in? Okay. Is that okay if I join you gentlemen?
Okay, say cheese.
Cheese.
All right. Got you. While we, uh, are on the business of the chaplaincy a little bit, did you want to talk about what David Berger gave us on that? Yeah. Uh, we've been working with, you know, initially we had a request come in for the purchase of this building on, on Seventh Avenue. We weren't opposed to doing that, but attorneys threw up some, uh, legs on it and worried about some gifting of public funds. And so there were some, uh, I would say Commissioner Weber kind of led a charge of what can we do to, to, how do we make this work out? And the last correspondence, I think, this is the last one I'm aware of, we got from David Berger on uh, the other day was county purchase the building for county specific reason. Uh, I think one of Commissioner Weber's idea was the sheriff could use the storage, stored space for some of that. And if the county did not need to use the entire space for its purposes, then yes, I do think the county could rent out a portion of the facility. And yes, there would need to be a lease or facility use agreement. But I think what he's saying is we can, we can make that work, but it would involve a, a lease and it would involve some type of, of payment that we'd have to negotiate. We can't. Uh, he's, they're very careful about us not getting into gifting of public funds on that. So, and I don't know where we go with that. I, I, go ahead.
I, this is an example of where, uh, bureaucracy just drives me crazy. We're willing to buy an asset and we're willing to let the chaplaincy use the asset for, if need be, a dollar a year kind of thing, as long as they maintain the property.
Yeah.
Right? And so who's going to sue us if we, if we do it, who's, who's going to say that we're preferentially doing something for the chaplaincy and that's not a good thing?
I, I agree with you, Aaron. We can put attorneys in timeout, but they probably won't like it.
Unfortunately, there are folks who have a, uh, kind of a very, they assume a very protective stance on.
As they should, right?
Religious freedom and, and avoiding inappropriate entanglement of religious organizations. I imagine there would be organizations that would take that on. But I think the lawyers prescribed a way for us to, to do it. We have to do it fairly and, and I think there are ways of working that out. So I think what we were going to do is when we got the word from the lawyer, then the next step is to contact our real estate agent because we still don't know what the, what.
That's right.
Potential is. I have to go through that and.
Yeah.
And, uh.
If I don't, Mike, I mean, you can have Sean do that and work with those folks because we'd have to. And I don't know what the lease, what they consider equitable.
Yeah.
We'll have to figure that out and then just make sure it's something they can work with because I don't, I, I think what you're hearing, we're not opposed to, to doing that building. We're not opposed to having the chaplaincy in there. We're just trying to figure a way to do it so, uh, we don't get slapped.
If I might ask, uh, someone from the chaplaincy, uh, can anybody start a chaplaincy chapter? I mean, you, is there a national, uh, yeah, cloak, yeah, please. And, and, and the reason I'm asking this is I'm still not sure that we shouldn't just say it would take forever to change the law and there are always people who want to abuse this spirit of the law. Like to say abuse the, use the letter of the law against this spirit of the law.
Right.
And, uh, this is an example of that. The gifting of public funds, that's a ridiculous interpretation right now. I look at the chaplaincy as an extension of the sheriff's department, no offense. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, but it's, it's law enforcement officers, it's peace officers. And you treat everybody, right?
Absolutely. Um, you have to remember the historical name of the chaplaincy was the Calhoun County Sheriff's Chaplaincy. And so it was, um, uh, probably about 10 years ago that we made the name Calhoun Chaplaincy because we were serving not only law enforcement, but fire and then EMS. So all the first responders in the county, um, I think there's around 18 agencies that we serve. Yes, somebody could come into Calhoun County and try to start their own chaplaincy. And the problem would be is, uh, connecting with the agencies that we already connect with. And so they wouldn't find much work, if any work. Um, there are other independent people in the county that sort of refer themselves as chaplains and they, 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 every once in a while, we will intersect with them on scene. But they're more looking at the community folks that they're trying, they're trying to serve. Sometimes, uh, they may be looking for people who could possibly join their church or something like that. But, um, as far as, you know, serving the first responders, uh, we, we were it. I mean, we have a corner on the market and we've never really had since 1983, never had another agency that's tried to, you know, compete with us or anything like that.
Well, I think we should let Mike and then proceed and be as aggressive as we, we can in, in their favor.
You know, and, and I'd be willing to put up that dollar a year myself. That, that's something I, I'd be willing to do.
Yeah, but I would have to hold you to, to $20, $24 then. 2028, I still want a $20, $24.
And, and, and I'm willing to deal with the inflation with that too.
That's the point. Yeah.
The department with the sheriff's department as well.
Need to come up here.
The chaplaincy does partner with the sheriff's department as well. We knew that they were also looking for a place to store some of their things. So we were, uh, doing this hopefully in a collaborative effort. Um, I know that Sheriff Thurman and, and our chaplains are very, very close. So we would like to look at this as a partnership as well. I don't know if you have anything else to add of how you could utilize it as well?
I know we do have some struggles with some storing, uh, some of our vehicles. They're long-term assets and I think Mike Mossma, his folks would be happy to, for us to move some of them out of his, uh, areas as well. So we could make use of the garage space over there, which I think is fairly substantial on this property.
Thank you.
Will, will you also? Will you pay a dollar a year also for sheriff?
I, I think we're covered under the $1. Her resolve doesn't it? Maybe I, I will.
Kelly, I'm a little confused in that, uh, you have a, have a hammer over your head now on this property, right? And this is an ideal piece of property.
Yes, it is. We work very closely with the sheriff's department, coroner's office, corrections office. We're right next door. The owners of the building have taken it off the market because they do want to see the chaplaincy in there. They do have a cash offer that's going to be approached, uh, to the owners within a week. And so they were giving us 30 days to do our best to try to get this building. It is absolutely perfect. We do have chaplains that need overnight stay. Uh, and so the upstairs of it has the bedrooms and the kitchen area. Uh, we do need a new office space. The city of Longview owns the building we're in now, and it looks like that we might have to leave sometime soon. They're redoing the building next to us. Um, and then of course it has two small conference rooms downstairs for training. And then we do have a garage space. It is the most perfect building.
For the public, could you provide the address or is that?
Oh, I do not have it with me. Um, I do not have that with me, but I can find it out for you on 7th. Yeah, 1900 block of 7th, right across from the expo next to the big field.
Close enough.
Yes, it's the yellow building. Yes. But it is perfect in every single way. We couldn't have designed it better ourselves.
But I'm hearing we'll, we'll move on this and, and try to move faster.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will we have to charge the chaplaincy fair market value under rent? Is that, I thought that's what you said and I don't see where that's.
I don't, I. What I said is there, there, the way he.
If it's just a dollar a year, I think this will work fine. But if it's like we're paying 9,000 a month for OPD and.
It, it just says the entire space, then yes, I do think county could rent out the portion of the facility. He's talking, the sheriff is using some of that. We're connected with the sheriff. It sounds like the chaplaincy started that way.
So the sheriff is.
And yes, there would need to be a lease or a facility use agreement. It didn't say.
But it's a gift of public funds otherwise then, right?
Something less would be an unlawful gifting of public funds and lead to fining from the S A O. It doesn't say the dollar amount. I think.
Yeah, so the dollar amount would have to be some kind of reasonable amount and you're not asking for a zero, so. No, no.
So how are we renting the, the house near the morgue for, for like a dollar a year to the Janus group?
That's, that's kind of, it is a legal question. My assumption is it's not, it's a, it's a public service entity, private, but it's not religious affiliated.
Oh, so the big hang up here is the religion?
Well, I think so, yeah. But it shouldn't be, but.
No, really pushback on it.
Like I mentioned, I think I shared with you three or four months ago when the chaplains first brought this before you, the arrangement you have with search and rescue, the search and rescue council for the RISAD complex, which is county-owned, and they do have a lease, a 50-year lease, which I believe it was a dollar for 50 years, I believe, or very most a dollar a year. So it is a similar pattern. Now, if you need those documents, again, I can find those, but there is a precedent in that regard.
So maybe the big key is that it's, it's under some type of lease.
And if they agree to be the property managers of the facility, then that we could discount whatever lease we come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. All right.
Anyhow, I'm urging us not to take a no, no for an answer.
I'll stand with you on that. Okay. One of the things, since I see Sheriff in the room, we had a 911 board meeting today. Today was the last day for our current, for John Diamond. And then it'll transition to Bob Gregory as their interim. And in two weeks, we plan to get together again. Bob will have some parameters set out to the type of search that sounded like maybe a firm or so identified for a permanent director.
So are you at liberty to tell us anything about what needs to be done at 911? What?
Well, I, I think it's, it's operating pretty well. The biggest, the biggest thing since I've been there is antiquated equipment. Our, our law enforcement and our fire department, they all have, our communication system is, is bad. And so the time I've, about the year and a half I've been there, it's been mostly working on trying to figure, figure that out. There've been some, they struggle like, like we do in our departments is getting full staff, getting people in.
On the equipment, I think we've certainly paid a lot of money to new radios, certainly for the sheriff's office, but we also, I think the 911 was going after some significant funding for new.
And God, I think it's 2.7? 2.1?
And that did not come through or did?
No, it, it came through. And, and I don't know that we're talking, I think it, it involves radios, but that's almost ancillary. The, the big problem is the, our systems that broadcast out.
Right, the towers and.
Yeah.
And the interconnects.
We're looking at going to a different system that, right now, things go out and it has to go back and then out like this and, and it needs to be more of a work and ping, ping around, so.
Sheriff, you have any idea what, if, if you had the magic wand yourself, how you'd take care of that? That, that is to say, it seems to me that the thing we've lacked in 911 for a long time is we've, we've depended, we haven't had what I would call the telecom expert involved. We've had salespeople involved, but we haven't had experts that are in the telecom area that would address them issues. Am I correct?
Well, yeah, that, that is a key point. There are people out there, salesmen trying to sell equipment and that sort of thing. But we did, last fall, we did go out for a request for qualifications and ordered a contract to a company called AdCom. They just completed about a four-month study and reported that back to us here in April. And they did, there's two parts to that. Currently, we have a VHF system, which is, like Rick said, was kind of getting along in years. And I think the big major update we did to that was probably about in 2008. And they have these microwave transmitters and that sort of thing. So the focus of the study was on current fixes, what we can do in the short term relatively cheap with the current system, which is what we're looking at moving forward with. The other part of it was looking at new technology. And there's UHF, or it's referred to 700 megahertz systems, which like Clark County uses. And actually, the recommendation of the consultant was to go to a system like that for the county, which would, so a whole different format. And I guess the starting price for that would be about $20 million.
Twenty million?
Twenty million to do this. That's new towers, that would include all new radios and all the police cars, fire trucks, dispatch stations and that sort of thing.
And that's going to UHF from, from a VHF?
Yes.
And, and they talked to you about the tree, the penetration into trees? Because the UHF is not as penetrating as the VHF.
Well, and that's, that's part of the, going to that system would require more towers and additional equipment and that sort of thing.
The VHF did require more towers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So basically what we're looking at now, the 911 district does have a fair amount of money on hand, including the 2.1 million for equipment. And so we're looking at a short-term fix to our current system, trying to upgrade that. So that's the focus, the, have to have the political resolve to move forward with this $20 million plus system that they recommended as being a long-term fix.
I really encourage that you have what seems like a longer-term plan.
That was a recommendation, yes.
Yeah. They, these, my knowledge, the people from AdCom, they don't, they don't, they're not resellers of the equipment. They're going to tell you what will work in your area and then they'll help you with somebody that resells, but they're, they're more just telling us what works.
They're an engineering consulting firm. They don't do the work themselves. They come up with the specifications and then it goes out to bed to various vendors that would do the work.
Have we looked at any U of W professors in their engineering department and communications?
No, no, we did, like I said, went out for RFQ. There's two companies submitted proposals and the board decided to go with the one company called AdCom, which we have a fairly long-term relationship with. They were involved in the transfer from the old center out to the new center. They oversaw that, the technology part of that and the, the successful bidders on that and we moved forward with them.
Is there also another issue to, will, the state patrol is on one system? Different than your system?
Yeah, the state patrol is a completely separate system that they run, operates statewide for their.
Can you interact with the state patrol adequately?
We, we have the capability to talk back and forth. And all, the backbone of that, this is electronic backbone. In addition to that, you have to have the dispatchers of people manning the terminals as well. So it's better to have it localized in that regard. I know one, one vendor, which I hear from vendors quite often, one was suggesting that we could piggyback with Clark County on their radio system, which is something we could look, look at in the future. So there is potential for that with the new technology, so.
Yeah. It's a lot harder than it sounds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Looking over everything and how they, they went out and measured and seeing all the little areas where there was good coverage, bad, I, yeah, yeah, I could get lost.
Yeah, I think about things like, there are satellite systems. You can't go through the trees, so I would have temporary tower if I had to be someplace. I mean, the, the big issue, if the law enforcement has to be out in the woods someplace.
Yeah.
You don't want them to be out of contact.
Exactly.
And if they could see past the trees, they'd be in contact with the satellites. That's a lot cheaper than a lot of towers.
Yep.
But we, we need a temporary fix until we get a new director. Is that, is that what the timeframe is?
Well, I think we'll get a new director before we get our temporary fix. And they're looking at probably about a five to six month turnaround. That's optimistic to get, get the, some new equipment in place and get it up and running.
Yeah.
So we're, hopefully you're trying to get an executive director onboard by September 1st, so.
They were, in the timeframe, I think she gave us, she was, she was hoping for January or February, if.
Yes.
The lag time on equipment and stuff was as expected. And 911 already had the funds for that, that they'd been putting away.
And particularly the 2.1 million and federal funds too, that have to be expended by the end of the year, so that's what we're focusing on.
It'd go faster if you identified the, the carbon sequestration in, in those towers.
All right, forget that's our.
That's a little bit of a stretch, I think.
Yeah. Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks.
I, I would imagine that the rate we have been going through executive directors in that agency, that there may be deeper personnel issues that have to be resolved that. That's usually the cause, if there's that kind of churning at the top, there's, there's some other personnel struggles going on, so. But I think, I think Bob Gregory's probably as good of any, as anyone to get to the bottom of that.
Anyway, that was an update on, on that, so. Anything else? Anything from the audience? Okay, we'll adjourn. Thank you.